All right. Good evening. Good evening again. My name is Meredith Tuitt. I'm Chair of the Massachusetts Commission on the Status of Women. I would like first to apologize for my raspy voice. I have a little bit of allergies going on. I am a United States Navy veteran, and this week we are planting flags in the cemetery that my American Legion post takes care of, 10,000 plus graves. So pollen, ragweed, everything you could think of has been attacking my system. But I couldn't miss this event. We are here because the MCSW, back in 2021, we released a report on the impact of COVID-19 related to women in the workforce. And recommendations to improve the status of women, especially women of color here in the Commonwealth, we received that. We worked on it. We reflect on that. Five years. So it's time. We are here to release a new survey. And this public hearing, virtual public hearing, is our release of that survey tonight. And here tonight, we are not, we're not bringing in guest speakers. You are our guest speaker. You are who we want to hear from. So all of you that have already registered to testify, thank you so much. But we hope that while you're on here with us, that you will make a decision to also share your story. I'm going to ask everyone to please, behind your name, if you're attached to an organization, please put your acronyms of your organization. If you're in a attendant school, college, university, whatever, please also drop it into our chat, so that way we are able to collect all of that information. What our hope is, is that we will be able to have this hearing tonight, listen to your story, listen to your testimony. It is being recorded, and later on, we will have it on our website. But we are also going to use the information that we are receiving tonight from you to be included in our report. The survey will launch this evening, and it will be open for 90 days. We will close the survey on August 22, which is a Friday afternoon, end of business day. So you have 90 days, 90 days to do the survey, 90 days to collect from other sisters and other women that you know within your circle, your church, your job, just at the gym, wherever you go. We ask that you get this out far and wide. Because we want robust, robust information in. We want to collect very robust quantitative data, socioeconomic data. We want as much as we can, because we want this survey and this report not only to reflect on what we've learned over the past five years, but we want to be able to use this report to show our legislative body here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts what we need to do for our women, and especially our women of color here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask my sister commissioners to kind of do a little intro of yourselves. We have a couple of the commissioners who are going to speak, and what I'm going to do is I'm going to start off and do do my intro, give a little bit about myself, my path, and how I ended up where I am today. And then I'm going to skip a couple of commissioners and jump to one of our sister commissioners who's new in the commission, who needs to be able to give her testimony before 6:15 or so, because she needs to leave. So we're going to jump out of order, because we really want to hear from her also. So my name, as I said, is Meredith Tuitt. I am Chair of the Massachusetts Commission on the Status of Women. Not, I was first appointed by the Women's Legislators here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and I presently serve under being appointed by the governor. I'm a United States Navy veteran. I am Caribbean-born, one of five children, but the only girl in my household. So I come from a very British standard, right? So imagine the life when I went to my mother and I said to my mother, "I'm going to join the United States Navy, and I want to become a jet mechanic." She said, "Okay, honey, whatever you want to do, you can do." And that was what launched me into who I am today, because my mother always supported me in everything that I wanted to do. And here it is, her only child, or only girl, I mean, wanted to be a jet mechanic, right? So I went into the Navy, and I served 14 years. I became a jet mechanic. I worked on S3 Hoover's. I worked on Helos. I worked on a variety of different other planes and so on throughout my time. And then I came back to Boston, Massachusetts, into the civilian world. What a trauma. What a transition, right? And, and what we, what I did when I came back, I got involved with a state representative, and that state representative got me involved in politics, and then she got me involved in the Women's Commission, and she got me involved in all the other organizations that did something for women here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, right? And it was awesome. So that was my life. Now I serve as Chair of the Massachusetts Commission. I serve as President of National Association of Commissions for Women, right? And that's how I would love our sisters to be able to talk about who we are. Oh, my day job. My day job is I'm a consultant. So I do consultant work, legislative consultant work for any, any organization or any person that reaches out to me. And that's how I would love everybody to be able to give a quick brief of who you are, right? And then we're going to jump into the hearing and talk about why this hearing is here. Did I see Dr. Miller also? Did she, did she just pop in? Okay, so Giselle, can you go ahead and do your piece? And then I could jump back into the regular format for the hearing, if you don't mind, because I really don't want us to lose your testimony.
Absolutely. Thank you so, so much, Chair Tuitt. And thank you, everybody, for being here this evening. It's so great to be in fellowship and find and claim joy in these times, knowing how uncertain that they are. As Chair Tuitt was saying, my name is Giselle Byrd. My pronouns are she/her. And by day, I am the Executive Director of the Theater Offensive, which is a theater company and social justice organization dedicated to queer and trans folks of color and our collective liberation. Because for us, collective liberation means collective action, and that means collective healing for folks from all walks of life. So my journey, it did not start in Massachusetts. I am a girl born and raised in Augusta, Georgia, to a single mama. And I was raised with my grandparents in Augusta. And to say it was a fun childhood is an understatement, but I am speaking from a very blessed and privileged place. I was always an artistic child in a family full of construction workers and, you know, administrators. My sister is a trauma nurse. And so here I came as this very artistic and liberated child. And I wanted to do theater. I wanted to be a performer. And I went to college for that in Savannah. But my real truth was that the whole time I knew that I was a woman. I was living falsely as this image that society had deemed upon me as a black body. And that was very hard for me to dismantle, because there was that voice in my heart that said, "This is not your truth." And so in January of 2015, I came out as a very proud, black, trans woman. And I then began my own personal mission to make sure that my community had the love and support that I received. I was very blessed to have a given family that supported and affirmed me, but also chosen family, and an employer that supported me. And that is rare for women of my experience. We are often told that we are to be sex workers, which let me be clear, from my perspective, sex workers work, always has been. So we need to, one, decriminalize it. But I saw so many of my sisters on the stroll. I saw so many of them working hard to make ends not even meet. And as a talent manager, I said, "Well, if I can help one of my sisters or one person in my community, that can then create a ripple effect." And I knew that for myself and for my own personal liberation, I cannot do that under the white male gaze of the entertainment industry directly. I knew I could not sustain that. And so I quit my job on May 31, 2023. So that anniversary is coming up. But I walked into my boss's office, and I said, "Today is the day. I have to go." And he said, "Go where?" And I said, "I'm, I said, "There is a negativity in this space. There was toxic masculinity. There was white supremacist culture at work." And I had to stand in my truth and step out on faith in myself and say, "I can't do it anymore." And so after nine years, I quit. And you all know, after leaving a job at that stage, it's very difficult. But the blessings poured in for me the moment I quit. Clients at the company calling saying, "We're going to help you pay rent. We're going to try to find you a part-time gig while you find the right thing for you." And so I prayed for three things. To return to theater, to pour into my community what had been poured into me, because without them, Giselle would not exist, and to be finally liberated for once and self-sufficient. In five months, almost five months exactly from the day I quit, I received my job as Executive Director at the Theater Offensive in Boston and made my move here from New York City, something my mama did not ever think I would do. She's upstairs now going, "I still don't think you would have left." But she's in Boston more than she ever came to New York City. So that's also a testimony to her, how she feels about Massachusetts. But that is my story, and I'm now really working to help make sure that our queer and trans artists across the country are taken care of in a time of immense censorship, that are all women, and especially our trans women of color do not go unheard and unseen, that their murders do not go unsolved, and that there is a liberated future for all of us. So that is my testimony.
Thank you much. Thank you so much, Sister. Thank you for that. And whenever you, you need to drop off, we understand. We appreciate you going out of, you know, letting me pull you out of turn, because we definitely needed to hear that. All right, so back to the agenda. Thank you before my, my communications and my Executive Director, you know, get, get upset with me, right? I would like to, one, acknowledge MCSW commissioners that are here with us tonight. Vice Chair Christine Monska is with us. Chair of Legislative and Public Policy, Giamel DiCarvallo is with us. Sarah Glenn Smith, who was our past chairwoman, she's here with us also. Our Chair of Finance is here, Tanisha Arena. Sister Commissioner Divya, Divya Shadverde is with us. And of course, Giselle, you've just heard from Giselle. Our regional commissioners that are here with us. So far, I see Plymouth County CSW. I see Michelle, and I see Casey. Everyone is dropping their names and their organizations into the chat. And with Berkshire, CSW, I see Meg. Thank you, ladies, for being here with us. And of course, you know, we wouldn't be able to do this without staff. Our Executive Director, Shaitia, our Communications Director, Ellen, our Regional Director, Tina, and of course, that awesome, out-of-the-box Executive Assistant Raven, right? Our interns, Vina, Christina, and Bella. Thank you, guys, so much for being here and getting us to where we are. I do apologize. The Chair of Program and Planet was trying to multitask, and she was trying to get here. She just texted me with her apologies to everyone. She was trying to clone herself, and it hasn't been able to be accomplished, right? So we are going to move forward, and what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask everyone to work with me, because my allergies is really messing with my brain flow, right? So, so we are now going to go to our Executive Director, Shaitia Spruell, who's going to speak about who we are and what we do. All right, Shaitia?
You think after five years, we know where the unmute button is. I just had to say it. You know, we always have to. So my name, as you heard, is the Shaitia Spruell. I am the Executive Director of the Massachusetts Commission. I always like to start off my intros, letting folks know that I also served as a State Commissioner and a Regional Commissioner. I'm originally born and raised from Springfield, where I served as a Handy County Commissioner from 2017 to about 2019. And then at the end of 2019, I was appointed to serve by the Massachusetts Caucus of Women Legislators to the State Commission. And then the pandemic hit. I do have to say, I think if the pandemic didn't happen, I may not be in this role. I think it allowed me to be able to show up to meetings and be present in ways that I wasn't able to before, because of the benefit of virtual meetings, Zoom meetings. We were, I think, on WebEx at one point. But it's really been a result of the sisterhood, the leadership, the mentors, all of the folks, the women that I met along the way, and then the pandemic forcing us all to be creative on how we meet, how we advocate, and how we move through this journey called life. So that's a little bit about me. It is so great to be here with you all. You know, the commission is celebrating almost, I think it's 27th year. We were legislatively created in 1998 as an independent state agency. Our goal is to seek to advance the equality for all women across the state and promote their rights and opportunities. The commission consists of 19 volunteer commissioners, one of which you just heard from, who are appointed by the Governor, the Senate President, the Speaker of the House, and the Caucus of Women Legislators. It might sound fancy, but it's simple. We are the bridge between the women and girls of the state and the State House, the legislators, the policymakers. Together, our purpose is to provide a permanent, effective voice for women throughout Massachusetts, and our mission is to study and report on the status of women in the Commonwealth. We're charged with advising executive and legislative bodies on the effect of the proposed legislation on women. So in short, the stories and the issues that we hear from you, for example, like today, we will share directly with our legislators and the decision-makers at the highest level. To fulfill our mission, the commission regularly conducts hearings like this. They usually are hybrid or in-person in the different regions across the state, and we collect testimony in all different sorts of forms and opinions on women's issues and concerns. The MCSW's charter is clear. We exist to empower the women of the Commonwealth, and we are the bridge between the issues you face and the decision-makers who have been, who have the ability to change, alter, prioritize policy changes, and to make our lives easier. After today's event, special sneak peek for you all. We'll be launching our survey, a new survey, and we're going to hope that you all take the opportunity to share your voice, your feedback, your thoughts, your experiences with us through that survey. And also just stick around, because there is also an opportunity to sign up for our newsletter at the end of this. I can, I can talk to this a little bit more about the survey, but the goal is that we want to hear from all women, not just the women of color who are going to be speaking to you all today, but all women, so that way we can do a snapshot on how women have fared since the onset of the pandemic. As you heard earlier, our Chair described that five years ago, we did a series of reports where we collected information as, on the impact of COVID and related recommendations to improve the status of women. We also did a report on women of color. I do encourage everyone here, if you get a chance, to go to our website and check out those previous reports, and just understand that this is kind of a re-up from that series of reports that we've done. We're focusing on three key issue areas. That's employment, access to healthcare, and home and family life. And we plan to share our findings far and wide and host more events to share that information that we learn.
I just want to jump in here and say, ladies, if you go and look at our previous conversation around the, the first report we did, it magnified that we had an urgent need for equity and social justice to be at the center of policy and decision-making. And when we talk about that, we are not just talking about women of color. We're talking about all women, right? So I just wanted to jump in and, and put that back on the top of everyone's mindset, that it's not just about women of color for this hearing. It's about all women and girls in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, right? Also, can I ask, I thank everyone for dropping their stuff into the chat. But behind your name, if you're with an organization, can you please put that there also, so we can make sure we acknowledge? So like, for example, Taisha Brianna Savage, Daphne Gomes, can you please just add? Kathy, can you just please add, if you have an organization you're with, so we'll know which organization when we are looking at, at your, your picture, right? Alrighty. Thank you so much. Shaitia, you want to, so, oh, the, the survey, is it going to be launched directly at the end, Shai?
Yes, we're, we're going to share the link. There is, a link we'll share shortly. As soon as you get the chance, please fill out that survey. It is short, and we want to include as many voices as possible. So on top of the testimony we shared today, we would love your, your story and you completing the survey. We do also have it translated in five different languages, because we are committed to accessibility as much as we can. We have the, the survey available in Spanish, Portuguese, Chinese, and Haitian Creole. So if you are here and you want to help us spread the word, and you know folks who would benefit from having those translated surveys, please direct them to the same link where they can find the survey in their respective language.
Thank you so much. And so next up is going to be Chair of Legislative and Public Policy, Giamel DiCarvallo. And Giamel, can you give a little bit of your testimony and then jump into what tonight is about?
Sure. Thanks, Meredith. So my name is Giamel DiCarvallo. I am Chair of Legislative and Public Policy Committee. I'm a Senate President Spillco appointee. I've been on the commission for four years. I am Brazilian and a part of the LGBTQ community and have a 10-year-old son. So I'm also a mom and navigating the split between the caregiving roles as well as the workforce roles that I have, as well as the advocacy and volunteer roles that I do. And I think my testimony is really around the impact that COVID-19, but as well as the supports or the lack of supports that might exist in our Commonwealth are creating some barriers for women and girls. Often, women are in a position of having at least two jobs, one, the one that they get paid for, and then the other that they don't necessarily get paid for as being a caregiver for either children, you know, adult children with disabilities, or even with parents, aging parents. And so what I've seen is a lot around the need for support around caregiving in all of its facets, but as well the immediate impact of COVID-19, forcing a lot of women out of the workforce in order to fully assume highly intensive caregiving roles when the society structures were not there during the beginning of the pandemic. And what I'm seeing a lot now is the impact of the economic hardships that are making it difficult for women to support themselves and their families. Often, women are in careers or jobs that are in the helping fields, and those fields are generally paid less than other fields, or are some of the first fields that are likely to be cut when budgets are being slashed at federal levels, and then having that domino impact to the state level trying to fill in the gaps. And so there's a lot of concern now that I'm seeing in the workforce around those potential cuts to helping professions and helping roles that generally support all of society, harming the people who are receiving those services, but also harming the people who provide those services and do so as their primary living. So that's generally the thing that kind of I'm focused on, and many of our legislative priorities are tied to supporting women in the various caregiving roles that we have, as well as providing support for expanding supports for the workforce development. But I'm also here to give you some logistical information around public testimony. And so I want to make sure, as we've been mentioning, public testimony a lot, and as the Chair of Legislative and Public Policy, I want to share with you information on what testimony is, why it matters, and best practices for sharing your stories. So public testimony is when you or any member of the general public wants to tell us what they know. Our public hearings provide a safe and open space for all women in their communities to be heard and to share their lived experience and the issues that impact their daily lives. This is the essence of public testimony, and when an individual speaks or submits a written statement on a subject, those stories might center on the issues that women face or obstacles that hinder the ability for all women to experience equity. The purpose of this public testimony is to gather facts and hear from the general public. And sometimes we host open topic hearings, and sometimes we host issue-specific events. So why does this matter? As the state's women's agency, we fight to elevate our most pressing issues in real time, but we can't do this work without all of you. That's why we're here this evening. The MCSW seeks your input as we work towards advancing the status of women across the Commonwealth. This evening's virtual hearing is focusing on the status of our lives since the pandemic, and we encourage you to keep your testimony on topic to help us better collect your data and stories. This hearing is public meeting and an opportunity to be yourself, to find others like you, and to share your story in a way that will positive. So we'll be calling on testifiers as you've registered, so please listen for your name, then identify yourself and where you live at the top of your remarks. And we'll be utilizing a timer this evening to ensure everyone can participate and have enough time to share. Remember to mute your mic if you're not speaking to show respect for your fellow participants. And if you didn't previously register to testify, but want to speak, feel free to chat any member of the MCSW staff and let them know that you want to speak. Afterwards, we encourage all in attendance to share their testimonies with us in writing to inform our work going forward. And so this evening, I hope you share your stories with us. So I want to hand it off to, back to our chair.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Our next State Commissioner, who's going to share a little bit about herself, is with us here, is our Treasurer and our Finance Committee Chair, Tanisha Arena.
Thank you, Chair Tuitt. Welcome, everybody, to our hearing. As Meredith said, I'm Tanisha Arena. My pronouns are she/her. And I was appointed to the commission by the Caucus of Women Legislators. I believe it's been about five years, and I'm on my second term as the Finance Chair. And a story that I can definitely share and talk about today, when we look at home and family. In my day job, I'm the Executive Director of Arise for Social Justice, which is a grassroots nonprofit that focuses on the rights of poor and low-income folks, around housing, homelessness, the environment, criminal justice, et cetera. And we look at economic issues. And when it comes time to discuss home and family matters, like the folks who are coming in the office, a lot of what we would see would be the disparate impacts, job loss and the way that that impacts the family, and even the categorization of family and some of the other systems and institutions around. For example, a mom with her adult children would not be considered a family. Those adult children would be considered their own separate unit for purposes of obtaining services. And if you are a single woman, the And if you are a single um woman, the services are basically not there. They weren't there before COVID. They certainly don't uh exist to the level that we need now. And that's something that I would see. So you're talking about a disparate impact among families, like what is happening? Who who um qualifies as a family, what social safety nets exist for folks in their uh experiences? Um, and we see that a lot. And the folks who also experience the most poverty are women and children. So that's something that I see. It's something that we do need to address in our policies. And we want to hear the stories that you also have that reflect this space so that we can go and advocate as best that we can as commissioners for women and girls across the Commonwealth.
Thank you, Sister. Thank you so much for that. Um, next up will be um Sister Commissioner Divya Chaturvedi. Um, Divya, can you share your testimony?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, my name is Divya Chaturvedi. Uh, I'm one of the State Commissioners. I was appointed by the Caucus of Women Legislators back in twenty twenty-two. I'm also the Vice Chair of the Finance Committee. Um, I am currently, uh, I live in Berkshire County and I work for a nonprofit that serves survivors of domestic and sexual violence called Elizabeth Freeman Center. Um, I have worked with immigrant women uh in various capacities before. I am also an immigrant. Uh, I'm originally from India. I've been in this country for many years. Um, and I know firsthand the experiences of many immigrant women, especially women, immigrant women that speak little or no English, uh, their experiences uh in healthcare settings, uh, which is often really challenging. Um, there is very, uh, there is less access uh to language uh in many healthcare settings. Uh, post, pre-COVID, there used to be in-person interpretation uh at the hospitals. Um, post-COVID, uh, many of those services uh went online or were even outsourced to other countries. Um, so it has become very challenging for many uh limited English-speaking immigrants or women uh to access uh language uh in healthcare, which in turn means that they are hesitant to go and seek help. And they need to, right? So they're not going for the preventive checkups. They're not going for the OB-GYN checkups because they don't want their young son to interpret for them what the doctor is saying. They miss important diagnoses. They miss important medication information. And overall, overall, it leads to poorer health for many immigrant uh women. Um, for survivors, there's also trauma uh that often goes unchecked, unnoticed uh in healthcare settings. Uh, signs of abuse uh go unnoticed uh because because uh they're not able to either articulate or or the health in healthcare settings, they don't have the language access uh to talk about these issues. So so, you know, in a sense, the help that is actually needed for many women uh who speak little or no English um is not available to them because of lack of language access. Um, many times, you know, women, when we go as women to doctors, many of our health concerns are uh, you know, not taken seriously. You know, it's 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 brushed off. Um, we are given a diagnosis on the spot without further testing. Um, and it becomes even more challenging uh when you are not, when you're not speaking English uh and and you're in the hospital setting. So it is, it is truly challenging uh for uh for immigrant uh women. Um, and uh, so we're just wanting to raise that for all of you out there. Uh, so each and every voice counts. You know, the more we speak out about the the stuff, the more people understand and know and the more change we can affect. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sister Commissioner. Thank you. Thank you for that. Um, and next, um, sorry, I was looking at my notes. Did you see that? So we have um one of our sister regional commissioners that are um, that is with us. And I would love for her to be able to share her story. Uh, let me see, where's Daphne? Daphne, are you still on here?
Yeah.
There you go.
I'm here, I'm here.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Can you um share your testimony?
Sure. Um, so my name is um Dr. Daphne Remy Gomes. I am um in the healthcare field. I'm a neonatologist. Um, for those that don't know, that's um a pediatrician that focuses on um the wellbeing of uh newborn babies, premature babies um in the neonatal intensive care unit. I most recently um uh was appointed to the Plymouth County um Commission on the Status of Women. So I'm super excited to be here. Um, I guess this is an inaugural meeting for me. Um, and um, you know, the things that are of most concern uh to me given uh, you know, my field um is uh certainly maternal health and bridging the gap um of disparities um for Black and Brown women um as well as neonates, obviously. Um, and how do we, as a community, um, help support women? Um, and through this process, um, that should be a joyous time. But a lot of times is fraught with complications, is fraught with um disappointments in the healthcare system, um, is fraught with um just complications for their babies and for themselves. And so um any way that we, as a collective, um can shine a light, not only shine a light, but really um push forward with legislation that will assist our sisters. I think um that's my why uh for being here, and um thank you.
Thank you so much for that. Thank you so much, Sister. Um, I'm going to go ahead and move to um the, right now, a sister who registered to testify. And uh, and then I'm gonna come back to all of the rest of you, right? Because my hope and my goal is that everyone on here tonight will share something. Share your story about your struggles, about your and um struggles in the workforce, struggles in career opportunities and so on. Um, so I'm going to call Kathy. Kathy, is it Waiswa, Waiswa? How do you say the last name, Kathy?
Waiswa.
Waiswa. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Kathy Waiswa, and I appreciate the opportunity to share my experiences today. As a woman of color working full-time, managing small business, and providing caregiving for my family, I face significant challenges that many of us endure. Despite my qualifications and hard work, I often feel that advancing in my career is an uphill battle. I struggle with the feelings of inadequacy stemming from the lack of connections that uh others seem to have. This challenge isn't just personal. It reflects a broader issue of job security and wage gaps that many of women of color experience. Um, the mental health toll is real. Balancing a full-time job, running my business, and caregiving leaves me overwhelmed. The stress and anxiety that come with this juggling act can be debilitating and directly impact my performance at work and my ability to present for my family. Financial instability compounds these challenges. We need to provide our, we need to provide for our families, yet the pressure of not feeling enough can profoundly be dis- As a small business owner, I face unique hurdles from accessing resources to navigating the complexities of entre- entrepreneurship without sufficient support. Um, we need actionable changes, livable wages that reflect the true cost of living, affordable childcare, and paid family leave. These are essential for allowing us to work and support our effe- families effectively. Additionally, we need policies suspicious, suspiciously aimed at supporting entrepreneurs in marginalized computed communities. By addressing these issues, we can create a more equitable workforce where women of color can thrive. Um, it's time to advocate for the solutions that empower not just ourselves, but everyone in our community. They're time.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. Uh, alrighty, so um Kathy, we have some other people that had registered um to come and testify. I don't see them in the list as of yet, but I would definitely um be coming to everyone here, you know, so be prepared. You start getting your story together, alrighty. Um, I want to jump to my Sister Commissioner, Vice Chair Christine Monzka. Um, if you don't mind, Christine, if you don't mind talking about some of the um labor and workforce issues that you come across and that you know exist out there.
Sure. Hi, everyone. I'm Christine Monzka. I'm the Vice Chair of the MCSW. Um, I'm not sure, Chair Tuit, if you're asking me to speak on behalf of the um, of the Commissioner and what we hear about or just what I hear about in my, in my day job as uh Executive Director of the Women's Fund South Coast. Um, but just to echo, sure, I kind of bridge both of those positions. So I want to echo something that I heard uh Commissioner DiCarvallo say, just around a lot of the challenges that working parents, particularly working mothers, have around carrying the weight of usually a full-time job, maybe some additional part-time work or other jobs, and then caregiving for children, grandchildren, um, or aging, aging parents or family members. And then also, the extreme cost of childcare is also a a large burden for, for working families. And of course, housing, um, for sure. But those are some that I hear about, either through the work with the commission or through my work with the Women's Fund South Coast.
So you would think that my technical difficulties. So, thank you, thank you, everyone. Um, and uh, thank you, Christine, for that. I'm, so, so staff, I'm not turning off my camera to ignore you. You know, it's when the nose starts messing with me. I don't want the tissue flashing, so. So that's why. Um, so if um I see, is my sister Sarah Glenn still here? Sarah? Sarah Glenn? She might have put me on mute. Okay, alrighty. Um, so next, uh, Sister Commissioner, um. Where did she go? Okay, I'm going to go to the regionals now, right? All right, I hope your regional sisters are ready. Okay. Um, so I am going to Michelle first from Plymouth County. Michelle, do you have anything you'd love to share about women in the workforce or any of your struggles?
Um, good evening. I wasn't expecting to speak tonight, but I I do have my own struggles. Um, I would, I think primarily my struggle is with, um, I would think that by age fifty-eight, the um work-life balance would be sorted out by now. But I work full-time, and now that my daughter is grown and doesn't need me, there are older people in my family who need me to bring them to doctor's appointments, to help bring them food and things like that. So it's really hard balancing the work part and taking care of those people. Um, so that's primarily what my struggles are these days.
Thank you so much. And that's an important thing to talk about, being a caregiver. Caregiver for your elders is is something that we are doing more of. And um, I'm glad you you you're able to mention that, so we'll have that in our notes. Um, also, one, I have to um go ahead and just say that we are collaborating with um students at Simmons University. They're gonna be working with us, uh, collecting all of the data from the tonight's hearing and from the um survey. And then we're going to be able to um use all of that within the report in our collaborations with them, right? Um, I, I want to say that I'm excited to see that we have a couple of more um regional commissioners on here, but I noticed two um high school students here. And if you don't mind, I see Dia. Dia, you said you're from Lexington High. Would you wanna speak?
Uh, sure. I did uh put in some uh information on the, on the group chat, but I would love to speak. Uh, my name is Deanna Gamm. I am a sophomore at Lexington High School. And I'm a second generation. My parents are immigrants from India. Um, I have seen them struggle their lives in front of me. And it's, it's, I, and I, it's interesting. I faced the same issues my pa- my dad mom did uh thirty years ago, thirty-five years ago. And I think it's time for change.
Yes, yes.
And I would love to be part of this wonderful organization that can empower me and help me make that change.
And we, we're here, we got you. Upper Middlesex does have um, have the um, that's the Athena Council in Upper Middlesex. And we, we understand the concept. This is why we, we're doing this report. Because we have to impact some change. We have to impact not just policy change, but change across the board. Equity, equity is so important, you know? Um, so we did drop a, a email into the chat for you, Dia. And we're excited that you want to be a part, you know, because we've learned that being strong mentors, especially to sisters like you, is so important, right? We're able to guide you through and support you and be there when you need, right? So make sure you grab that email, and uh we'll definitely be reaching out to you, right? Thank you, thank you, thank you. We're hugging you.
The hug, thank you.
Okay, okay, thank you. Um, Stephanie, Stephanie, what school are you at? Where is Stephanie?
Hi, I'm Stephanie. I'm Stephanie Campbell. I I wish I was, I wish I was in high school, but I'll, I'll take that. Good evening, everyone. Um, so much to someone else. I saw this on Facebook and just wanted to get a sense of what was happening, but I wanted to uplift a few things. So I am a mother of two. I had my first baby during the pandemic, which anyone who had a baby during that time had a very unique isolating um pregnancy experience. And so I want to just uplift the support. I'm sure you could hear the other baby laughing.
Um, I want to um uplift like support for particularly moms who work, um, Black moms. The rising cost of childcare makes it very difficult um to really see the benefit sometimes of working when your whole paycheck is going out of the door. And then the other thing I think it's important, um, that particularly, I can talk a lot about Black moms. I think we're informally trying to figure out how to support each other, but really increasing mental health resources and access um as we're navigating this journey. And lastly, my number one complaint right now is Eversource. Um, the amount of money that we spent to heat our house this winter, looking at that delivery and supply amount, it's not sustainable for any family. Um, and I really hope that um something is done, particularly for people like myself who identify as middle income. There are tons of programs in the Commonwealth, but you don't qualify for them because you make too much, but not enough. And I feel like um just as myself is a professional, I'm an educated Black woman, I should not be struggling the way my family is struggling.
And someone mentioned like career pathways. I definitely think there's been um an unintentional, I'm gonna just be gracious about it, impact since I started my family to my career pathway.
Thank you, thank you. I could not.
And I can write something up. I didn't plan to speak, but I'm happy to write those points up if that's helpful for you all. But Eversource is just, this is not gonna work. We went to hit the game.
Thank you. Yes. I don't know if anybody else on here has ever paid, has paid attention to your bill. It has tripled. So I understand what she's talking about. And that's not the usage, that's the delivery.
Correct, correct.
You know, so that is something that we um, I don't know how um, how we could look at it. What we, what we can look at mass utilities or something and to see what they're doing around that. Um, alrighty, so uh, so the other ladies that have registered to speak.
I'm sorry, I got kicked out of the meeting. I don't know what happened, but um, I couldn't hear any of the comments because I got kicked out.
Oh, sorry. Oh, yeah, no, I was saying that I know that um, there was some, I um, it was brought to mass utilities, for mass utilities, to try to look at what is going on with the delivery um charges. Um, because you and I- Because you and I are not the only two that called and complained. So, so there must be something being done. So maybe we could look at it and see if there's something that's out there. Oh, you didn't, so-
No, I mean, I don't want to delay the testimony, but I heard that they were supposed to be doing a credit, but I didn't see anything on my bill. At this point, I'm like, I can drive to Springfield and get my own gas for my house as much as they're charging.
Exactly. So maybe we'll do something and look at that. So we'll write that down and do. Anyone else on here? How about Sunrise Sanchez? Are you, I see you said student. Do you want to speak?
Hi.
Oh, excuse me.
I'm Sunny. I'm a student at Holyoke Community College. And I am signed up to take a health equity course in the fall. And I've been working closely with Dr. Vanessa Martinez. And she's the person who recommended that I participate in the meeting, just to see who's here and to listen in on what you all are talking about. Just because I expressed interest in studying nutrition with the hope of helping to bring access to nutritional health to low-income communities and especially women of color, immigrant women, and working with like families and children.
Thank you so much for that and good luck on the school. You know, and don't, don't forget us. You can always log in, come to any of our meetings, any of our regional meetings. Go to the website and see. And we, we have so much out there that, you know, we can share. But thank you. Anyone else? Does anyone else want to testify? If not, we're, we're kind of getting down to the end of the-
If not, I'd love to spend a couple of minutes talking about our survey.
Yes. Yes, please. Alright, Saitea, can you share, can you share it up?
Yeah, so if Ellen's, Ellen's going to get it up for me. But we, as we opened, we talked about this relaunch of a survey that we want to get a snapshot of how everyone has been doing since the pandemic. The survey is opening tonight. Surprise! It's available. If you wanted to fill it out, it will be available until August 22nd. We're going to keep it open for as long as we can to get as many voices included as possible. As I mentioned, it is in five languages. And we ask that you not only fill it out, but share it with your network. Share with your sisters, your cousins, your aunties, your moms. Help them fill it out if they're not online, because it is a, it's a SurveyMonkey link, so it's an online form. It's about 30 questions, shouldn't take you more than 10, 15 minutes. And talk about these topics with your friends. Understand that you're not alone. I, I know we talked about Eversource. That's one issue that you're not alone in. Trust me, my bill is crazy too. But also the theme on childcare, access to childcare, access to affordable childcare, that's a huge issue, believe it or not. It's been one of the forefront issues since we were created in 1998. And yes, Michelle, all women can take the survey. We're inviting all women to participate regardless of how you identify, how old you are, what demographic county, zip code you come from. We just want to be able to say, this is what the women of the Commonwealth said. Our goal is to report out our findings in the next fiscal year. So our fiscal year ends June 30th and we start a new fiscal year, fiscal year 2026. And this is the year that we'll be unveiling all that we learned from this hearing, the last couple of hearings and that survey. All of our hearings are open to the public, free. A lot of the time, they're hybrid, if not completely virtual. So I do encourage all of you all to sign up for our newsletter. That's in our, on our website and I'm sure the link will become available in the chat in just a minute. But if you scan this QR code, it'll bring you to that webpage that talks about the bill. I mean, the survey. And it directs you to each of those surveys with the five different languages. And again, we ask you to share with your friends, ask your friends to complete it. Share with your coworkers. We're trying to get as many responses as we can. So that way, we're getting a really clear snapshot and able to talk about those topics, those findings with the policymakers and it really impacts some change. We, I would like to give some, a moment or two to the chair or the vice chair to give any closing remarks. But other than that, we appreciate you all joining. I know it is a gray evening in May. We appreciate you understanding the time change and sticking with us through tonight's event. I really hope that this isn't the last time I see any of you. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Chair Tuita.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Thank you for those that I randomly called on and you stepped up and answered. We appreciate you for that. The survey is so important. And, and it's important for us to be able to not just do women, but young women. Our girls, we need some responses because our young sisters start working around the age of 14 and 15 sometimes. And we need to know what's happening with their work-life, their balance, right? As you can see with the young sister, Dia, you know, they have so much to say and we need to hear what they have to say also. So I, we, we beg you, we implore you, share it far and wide. Send it to your network. Every corner of Massachusetts should be flooded with this survey because we want to be able to give very strong report when we do release this report, that our elected officials will then say, okay, we need to look at this. We need to look at this. One of the things we did learn during COVID, and then I'm going to let Christine say something, was that a lot of the immigrant parents in our Commonwealth needed their young daughters to handle, fill out the forms, reading, because some of them could not do the English reading. So it's important that we get all, all of their responses also because they might be the caregiver in their household. They might be the translator in their household. So, so it's definitely important. And then when you think about our aged community, our mature community, the ones that are having set incomes that are struggling, the ones that are in beginning stages of dementia, Alzheimer's and so on. We need to be able to get information about them also. So if you know someone who's a caregiver, ask them to fill it out. They can fill it out on behalf of, you know? So it's so important that we get as much information as possible to get this survey to the level that we would love for it to be at. Christina?
I think we'll be very brief, but just want to say thank you so much for taking the time out of your day to be with the commission today. If we're not listening to the voices of women of color, we're certainly not doing our job. So thank you, thank you, thank you for all that you have shared with us today. It's an incredible honor to join and serve with my state commissioners, my regional commissioners and everyone from the community who shared their really important stories. So please also consider filling out the survey as well because that information really helps inform our legislative agenda. Thank you, everyone, very, very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Ellen, did you drop the link for the newsletter? I didn't see it. Okay, thank you so much. And I hope everyone will definitely sign up to get our newsletter, right? That is so important. And again, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.